Things that puts it off of here.
I don't know what happened to my...
Then he's picking them in January.
My grandfather used to do Navy.
Oh, hear this. I'm going.
Up the phone, driveby, quite a bit up there, Huron County, northern.
That's a pretty good money crop.
It's hard on the equipment.
Okay, we are going to open up the public hearing for the 2002 general fund budget. This is a formality, then we'll get into the meeting. Any commissioner comments at all or anything? We received budget at our last meeting. Anybody want to comment on the budget? I have to say that three times. Once again, we are opening up the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak on behalf of the 2022 general fund budget? Going third time, does anybody want to talk on the 2002 general fund budget? Seeing none, we're going to close that and we're going to start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item five, closed session opioid litigation update, which we will go into closed session. Gary is going, will give us just an update where we're at, the county. For those that aren't familiar with the opioid litigation, I'm sorry?
I hope it's not me.
All right, I'm sorry, it's Gary, okay, I'm sorry.
No, our litigation attorneys will be joining us in closed session via Zoom.
There was a class action, you want to just give a little bit of background, Gary?
Yeah, so what, this is, it came before the board a long time ago, but what happened is there was a lot of class action litigation against the various companies that were selling the opioids, flooding them into the market, people dying, you know, the whole story. And a lot of insurance companies, governmental agencies, either our jail or insurance cost hurt expenses, and we were approached by some attorneys that do class action litigation here in Michigan to see if you all wanted to get involved. There was a meeting to review basically what the litigation was all about, and the county got involved as a party. And the, there was a case, the cases were consolidated in one circuit. It's the same thing that happened with the OSHA stuff, Sixth Circuit in that case, in Cleveland, and there are cases underway now and other cases are settling. There was the main company that started the opioid production with Oxycontin was, they went bankrupt in their claims in the bankruptcy proceeding, and apparently a settlement was reached there. To be honest with you, I'm not sure which, I think we're in the multi-district litigation, but we're not one of the parties actually in the trial that's going on. And there have been discussions about settlement, and apparently everybody thought they were close more than once, some states object, so. And the, my understanding is that the attorneys doing this will obviously answer these questions, but the, if the settlement, it'll come into the state and be distributed based upon, I think, population, something like that, so that's about what I know.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to go under?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to go into closed session regarding opioid litigation update.
That'll be at the end of our meeting.
No, it's first.
Oh, it's first?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Are they here?
I apologize.
They're, they're joining us via Zoom.
Okay, all right, we're going to go into closed session. Roll call, and then we will be right back out.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin? Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
We will be back out shortly. All right, we're going to get back here. Item number six, minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the 10-21-21 commission meeting.
Support.
Discussion on any of it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Proclamations, we've got A, first one recognizing Jim McGuire. I don't think Jim's here this evening.
He's not, this will be presented at their next meeting.
Okay.
So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing and congratulating Mark White, 2020 Michigan Professional Emergency Manager of the Year. We have proclamation, and I'm normally not at a loss for words, but I can't do much tonight here, so Georgia's going to read it. Let's read it, no. You need to stand up, Mark.
George, take him up to the, make it official, yeah. So I got a motion, do I have a second?
Support.
The proclamation recognizing Mark White, 2020 Michigan Professional Emergency Manager of the Year. Whereas Mark White, St. Clair County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Deputy Director, has been awarded the 2020 Michigan Professional Emergency Manager of the Year by the Michigan State Police. And whereas the Professional Emergency Manager of the Year award recognizes an emergency management professional who displays outstanding professional ethics, leadership, and innovation, and provides outstanding contributions to the field of emergency management in the state of Michigan. And whereas, as the Deputy Director for St. Clair County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, Mark established the emergency management framework for all county agencies to function during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mark was instrumental in providing situation awareness to his county administrators. He has supported the St. Clair County Health Department and all local first responder agencies on many levels, and was the main contact with local hospitals and EMS agencies. Deputy Director White's leadership and vast knowledge of proven emergency management principles set the foundation to respond to the many challenges that the pandemic created within St. Clair County. And whereas Mark's, excuse me, career with St. Clair County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management began in May 2013 as a planner, exercise developer, and NIMS ICS trainer. In 2019, he was promoted to Deputy Director. Mark has accumulated an extensive background of over 35 years of experience that includes fire service, emergency management, and disaster response. He is a great example of a constant professional who relates with community partners to provide a knowledge-based perspective to solving issues within emergency management. And whereas Deputy White has taught hundreds of hours of emergency management courses and coordinated dozens of full-scale exercises for public and private partners, he has always supported and forwards training programs provided at the state and federal level to all his local jurisdictional partners, and truly believes that providing training and exercises is the foundation to a solid emergency management program. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners on behalf of its citizens dishear by death this proclamation recognizing Mark White as the 2020 Michigan Professional Emergency Manager of the Year, and extend our deep appreciation for his distinguished service, and urge our fellow citizens to join us with heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
Okay, nice job, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item eight, consent agenda, items A through E.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve items 8A through 8E and the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Reports of standing and special committees, Commissioner Vandembosh, I'm going to start with you.
Well, since we just did, Mark, he was down helping us today because we had a major fire in the south end of the county today. We lost 26 units and a senior living community, total loss. And I'd just like to thank, Elginak Fire was the initial responding unit, and then Automatic Mutual Aid got Marine City, Clay Township, and Ira involved, but then we also had to call a second alarm, which activated City, Fort Yarmouth, Fort Yarmouth Township, Marysville, Kimball Township, Richmond, and it also involved emergency management, Red Cross, just numerous things, our deputies, the Clay Township Police were first on scene, and between that and the state troopers, they got everyone out of the building so our guys could fight the fire, and we got everyone out safely. The Elginak Lions Club set up, warming shelters are ready, Mark and his staff were down there ready, working on trying to get them housing and getting someplace to stay. Councilman Jake Scarborough's trying to put a fundraiser together on December 11th that Mr. Bohm's going to help me with. I haven't told him yet, but, Mr. Bohm, you got to help me with something.
I'm going to volunteer.
We got to volunteer, but we're going to try and, it was a great community effort to help, and Elginak Schools provided a bus so we can get the people moved out of the, you know, it wasn't a terribly cold day, but it wasn't a very nice day to stand outside when you're not ready for it. And it was just a, a lot of the communities already offering free food, free accommodations for these people, so it is, it's heartwarming that the community comes together like this, and it's just not the city Elginak, but Clay, Ira, and all, and Marine City, we're all, it's working together, which is what we need to do to get through this, and it's a terrible time of year to have something like this happen.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, I don't have anything like that, but I met with the six townships and the city of Memphis in regards to what we're going to be addressing later, and I've already got two formal letters back and what they're going to be doing with the funds, and I'll be getting formal, which I will hand into the full board when we address this in December.
Okay, you're good.
Nope. Nothing tonight.
Greg. Georgia? Today, actually Gary, myself, Georgia, and Dan Casey went down to the Detroit Economic Club to listen to Jerry Norcia, who's the president of DTE, just to talk about the grid, kind of the future, so on and so forth. One of the interesting takeaways that I had, you know, there's some of these technologies on the horizon, but those technologies are still quite a ways off, and that natural gas is the preferred choice per se, right? So as there's more need, there's going to be more need for, you know, potentially gas-fired plants, which we're in very good position for potentially additional investments with that. After that, they had a 330 in East China, they fired up the new plant down there, probably at about 30 to 40 residents, just to explain what was going on. It's making a lot of noise right now, it's not, not normal, they got to burn the steam off to clean the pipes out, and you know, so they actually did a pretty good job, because when you do drive by there, it's a little bit noisy, but those are all the startup pains per se of the new plant, and they assured us that there's a decibel level that is, is net zero from where it was at before and stuff, so they, they did a really good job of Q and A with all the people that live there in that area and stuff, so that was, that was, literally just got out of there not that long ago. So moving on, we're going to start with citizens wishing to address the board. I've got Linda, yeah, Lorero, is that, I know, I'm going to put, you can go right up there.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to address citizens' rights, and I'm going to talk about Abraham Lincoln, the Constitution, and the Nuremberg Code, and you probably have already heard these, many of you, but maybe some of you haven't. I'll start with Abraham Lincoln. He said, and I think it's so beautiful, "This nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, for the people, and by the people shall..." and by the people, shall not perish from this earth. I declare and decree that over this country." Okay, that was Abraham Lincoln, one of our forefathers. Then the Nuremberg Codes, there's just 10 of them. And I think they rather apply to some of the things that are going on in our country. The first one stated that "the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that a person involved should have legal capacity to consent and should be so situated to exercise free power of choice without the, any element of force," you know, like coercion. "Fraud, deceit," fraud, do we see some of that? "Deceit, overreach, or any other form of constraint or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension of the elements of the subject matter involved as to enable them to make an understanding and enlightened decision." So in those shots that are given, the pharmacist can open up that, and there's a blank piece of paper, doesn't tell what's in that shot. So that's not informed consent. "The experiment should be such as to yield fruitful results for the good of society procured by other methods or means of study, and not random and unnecessary in nature." Parentheses, there are therapeutics that kill the virus. And three, the experiment should be so designed and based that the results of the animal experimentation, in this case, it was ferrets, and they all died in the one that you're taking here. "And a knowledge of the natural history of the disease or the other problem, and under the study, the anticipated results justify the performance of the experiment."
Add about 20 seconds, Linda.
Okay, all the other ferrets died. Number four, the experiment should be conducted as to avoid all other unnecessary physical and mental suffering and injury, and no experiments should be conducted where there is a prior reason to believe that the death or disabling injury will occur, except perhaps in those experiments with experimental physicians all served as subjects. Six, the degree to be taken should never exceed the determined by the humanitarian importance of the problem to be solved by the experiment. Seven, proper preparation should be made and adequate facilities provided. I believe I have the right to finish what I'm talking about, "to protect the experimental subject against even remote possibilities of injury or disability of death." And eight, there's only three more. "The experiment should be conducted only by scientifically qualified persons. The highest degree of skill and care should be required through all stages of the experiment who conduct or engage in this experiment." Number nine, the cause of the.
I'm gonna have to cut you off, no more, Linda. Okay?
Why is that?
It's just what we do, three minutes, you're allowed to talk. If somebody wants to give you their time, you can continue.
All right.
It's a three-minute time frame.
Can I sign up for a three-minute? Because I think the lady is getting tired.
That would be up to the chair.
You know what, Linda, get back up there. We'll let you finish up.
Yes, I have three minutes of mine.
I'm almost done.
Yeah.
Number, 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 was I an eight?
Nine.
Nine, "during the course of the experiment, the human subject should be at liberty to bring the experiment to an end if he has reached the physical or mental state where continuation of the experiment seems to him to be impossible." And lastly, "during the course of the experiment, the scientist in charge must be prepared to terminate the experiment at any stage if he has probable cause to believe in the experiment of the good and careful judgment required of him, that a continuation of the experiment is likely to result in injury, death, or disability to the experimental subject." There you go. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Timothy Parker.
Sitting in two BOC meetings, it was, it seemed to me that the board in regards to especially the St. Clair County Health Department Director gave lip service to our constitution, then violated its ethical, legal, governmental, and religious implications. I mean, we say the pledge, but it's like, for, for what purpose if we violate constitution? Since I was a substitute teacher 10 years in St. Clair schools, St. Clair County, too often, I think Americans are in name only. And whether it's Christians, Republicans, Americans, who give lip service to their platform yet deny their creed, hypocrisy disturbs me. I understand the necessity of functional oversight. But, and it may be just because of the fact that I haven't had too much observation time, but it seemed like Mr. Fletcher and Ms. Hepling seemed to have almost more control over the board than the constitution. I wondered when we were talking about the St. Clair County Health Department Director, it's like, how much more did she have to do to get fired? It seemed that the testimony was sufficient, but not. I just, I don't understand. I called the COVID pandemic in April 2020 the new god of America. I challenged our church. People told me I was wrong, yet we've worshipped it with trillions, corrupt education, corrupt government, blood, life loss, work loss, and cane produce as people blindly gave away freedoms to tyrannical rulers. Because of my stand, I was cancel cultured. And I know that patriots feel this way when we see the constitution denied. Patrick Henry said, "Give me liberty or give me death." Freedom was worth death to obtain than maintain. Sadly, people give liberty away and receive death. That's tragic. Our founders believed obedience to tyrants is disobedience to God. I just have a short paragraph. When will patriots, companies, and politicians stand on freedoms against tyrants so we can let freedom ring in America? Christ's gospel in our founding documents gives inalienable freedoms that should never be infringed. Galatians 5:1 says, "For freedom Christ has set us free." So standing in Christ's freedom makes us noble, godly citizens what everyone should publicly desire. Thank you.
Pam Binnsfield.
Good evening. Then again, from below in the great heavy stack came a groan from that plain little turtle named Mac. Your majesty, please, I don't like to complain, but down here below, we are feeling great pain. I know up on top, you are seeing great sights, but down at the bottom, we too should have rights. Sorry. We turtles can't stand it, our shells will all crack. Besides, we need food. We are starving, groaned Mac. But as Yertle the Turtle King lifted his hand and started to order and give the command, that plain little turtle below in the stack, that plain little turtle, whose name was just Mac, decided he'd taken enough, and he had. And that plain little lad got a little bit mad. And that plain little Mac did a plain little thing. He burped. And his burp shook the throne of the king. And Yertle Turtle, the king of the trees, the king of the air and the birds and the bees, the king of a house and a cow and a mule. Well, that was the end of the Turtle King's rule. For Yertle, the king of all Salam Hassan, fell off his high throne and fell punk in the pond. Might be odd that I'm getting emotional, but I read this to my children. It's one of their favorite stories. This is an excerpt from Yertle the Turtle by Dr. Seuss. And it may seem a little juvenile to start my time off this way. However, Dr. Seuss has depicted quite simply how our country works. Or at least how it did, how it was intended. Oh, sorry, and how it's been perverted. It is a deliberate misconception that we are a democracy. You can hear politicians and mainstream media say it all the time. It's a threat to our democracy, whatever it may be. The United States is a constitutional republic. It's extremely important to make this distinction. A constitutional republic is a form of government in which a representative is elected, all of you, by the people to govern over them according to the rules established in the law of the land. U.S. citizens elect a president and other representatives who then govern them as the constitution directs them to. A democracy should be a form of government in which the leaders, while elected by the people, are not constrained by a constitution as to its actions. In a republic, however, elected officials cannot take away or violate certain rights of the people. It's also stated in the pledge that we say every time. That is what we expect from all of you. I've become a broken record repeating how the bare minimum we expect from you or any elected official is to uphold the constitution. By approving the resolution last week with the changes Mr. Fletcher made, has once again shown us that this is something you are not capable of. The original, the original resolution was written as such because you should be upholding the constitution regardless of what the U.S. Communist Party says. If you can't face whatever consequences Mr. Fletcher mentioned, then step down for someone who can. A mandate is not a law. According to Roman and Civil Law, a mandate is a written command given by a principal, the mandator, to an agent, the mandatory. This becomes effective when the mandatory agrees. This can be found in Black Law's dictionary. I have one at home that I reference quite often. A mandate also does not go through the legislature, which is who makes the laws. This is Government and Civics 101 and is covered in the constitution. Maybe some people believe this is not our or your issue. It's somewhere up the chain. It's not. It's here. It's in our schools, it's in our cities, it's in our townships, it's in this county. This is a war designed not to look like a war. If you don't know what I'm talking about, you haven't been paying attention. To again reference Dr. Seuss, and turtles, of course, all the turtles are free, as turtles and maybe all creatures should be. Thank you.
Elizabeth Ely. Ely.
Hi, I am Elizabeth Ely. I am the founder of the Blue Water Holistic Health Network. And I just want to say that you will never sort out whose medical view is right and whose is wrong. That's not your job, and you've said so. You've certainly ignored my evidence that there's no isolated virus causing these deaths from unusual symptoms. So why not let the people make their own decisions? Seeing that the constitutions of the U.S. and Michigan guarantee the very rights to the people that the actions of the St. Clair County Health Department have repeatedly, endlessly, piously violated by threatening our jobs, businesses, even our children, we the people have for some time now asked for your protection. Balancing, I guess, the rights of the people with a possible financial loss to the county, you passed the resolution guaranteeing citizens' constitutional rights, but made it subject to what was called the law. And what is the law, Mr. Fletcher clarified? Mandates and executive orders, and any rule that gives the county grant money as a reward for following it. I get that the threat to withhold funding from this county's programs is no trivial matter to the people and businesses located here. But in this country, a law is not an order or a mandate, and it is null and void unless it is passed by a legislature and signed by the executive, and it preserves our rights as guaranteed in the constitution. Nothing is superior to the constitution. But Mr. Fletcher explicitly clarified that by voting for that resolution, you allowed these mandates and orders to carve out exceptions to constitutional rights. You even had a chance to approve the original resolution duly supported by most who testified over two prior meetings that would not have placed laws over constitutional guarantees. I also noticed that this appeal to the law excuses the county health director for dropping her quarantine order for children only when the state passed a law to withhold funds for that kind of behavior, not when you ordered it. You even added a little clause congratulating the department for its handling of this crisis. And now, because you made your position so clear, lawsuits may cite your words and actions, count on it. And you will be personally liable if it is found that you violated the rights of the people, quote, "under color of law." And that's the language used in 18 USC 242, and yes, it's personal liability. I know it's. Huh, 20? Okay, I know it's hard to balance the needs of the county with the rights of the people, but you took an oath to honor the rights of the people. Honoring both is not possible. If you voted for this, the only way out is to resign.
Okay, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. Saying none unfinished business, we're gonna get into new business if it seems like we go through these fairly quickly because they were on our agenda last week discussed. Forward it to the full board, which gives commissioners two weeks to get any information they would have or would need. Item A, approval of county disbursements.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve October 20, October 2021 county disbursements in the amount of $27,544,836.75.
Support.
Discussion.
Forgot my glasses.
Roll call.
Commissioner McCannell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is present. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item B, the survey and remonumentation grant application.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the approval of the survey and remonumentation 2022 grant application as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C.
I'm gonna make a motion so we can discuss this, to approve the fiscal year 21 MDHHS contract with probate court to provide liaison services to clients of probate court for a term of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021 in the amount of $71,850.
Support.
Discussion.
So this is a year-old contract. We're just receiving this for the first time. This wasn't at, at the committee meeting. And it got presented because the state's requesting their payment, and we've never seen this contract. So this is a contract that we renewed in September, October. Not this one, but the same contract we got in October, and we approved it for the 2021-22 year. But we never did get this one for the previous year. So I don't know how you want to handle this. Normally, when things come at us, right away, we just usually ask them to come to committee meeting.
Two questions. One, how are we gonna pay for this? And the other one, what happens if we turn this down? What happens?
So this contract, our court administrator did sign this contract in September of 2020. So the individual did perform the work. So, you know, I feel we do owe the state of Michigan this money. And the courts do have the ability to do that if the funds are within their budget. However, this department is trending over their budget, so they will be over budget in 2021.
How do we correct the over budget? How do we correct the over budget?
Typically, that's the board has to approve a budget adjustment for that.
Okay.
And take money from somebody else.
Just for discussion, what would happen if we did turn this down? Would the state come after us legally?
Yes, they could.
Okay.
So I didn't know if we wanted to visit, you know, to have the person that's in charge of this contract come in and talk to us at our committee meeting next time.
Is it time sensitive?
Well, the contract is over a year old and expired. They are looking to get their payment before the end of the year, but if it waited till December, they would still be paid prior to year.
Right, too. You want to table this thing? Get them in?
Well, you already have a motion and a second. We're discussing it now. You have to have a motion to table it?
Would you, I guess, would you...
Or if we turn this down?
Or we just vote, or we just vote no? And then it would come back? But then would it come back at full board? But if we table it, it's got to come back.
You could vote it down and then vote to table it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we accruing, we're not accruing late fees for this?
No, we're not. No.
What we did at the, because I serve on the planning commission, we had an issue similar to this. And rather than take a vote on it, we did table it until we get questions.
I agree with, that's the right procedure. If you vote to table it, it automatically comes up at your next meeting. If you vote it down, then you have to vote at that meeting.
Will you rescind your motion, Greg?
So I would rescind my motion.
Make a motion to table?
I would make that motion.
Do you...
I would also rescind.
All right, so we've got a motion to table.
Support.
All in favor?
Oh, just one more discussion. This will come up in our committee meeting, correct? Very first next meeting, not the full board meeting. So this will be answered at our committee meeting?
Yes. It'll be yes. We're going to ask them to come to the committee meeting to talk about it, and then it would go to the final meeting for approval.
Well, you could potentially have it for final action next meeting.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, okay. So they'll be back next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D.
At this time, I move to adopt resolution, resolution 21-22, designating 2022 general obligation limited tax refunding bonds as qualified tax exempt obligations.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E.
I would, can I make a motion and abstain on a vote?
Uh, well, you're on the RISA board, right?
Yes.
But you don't receive financial gain or anything out of this contract or anything, so...
I believe you can make the motion, but then you would just not vote.
Yeah, if you feel comfortable doing it, that's fine, Greg.
The only, if you're going to, don't want to participate, the only thing you have to do is abstain from voting.
Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the antenna site lease extension between Regional Education and Services Authority, RISA, in St. Clair County for a term of 1122 through 1231, 31 in the amount of $12,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Abstain.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item F.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Agreement as presented.
Support.
Discussion. It's an annual deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 Hybrid DWI Drug Court Grant Agreement as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item H.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 Bluewater ERPL LLC contract with mental health program for a term of 1121 through 93022 in the amount not to exceed $32,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item I.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 here-on-house subcontract with Mental Health Court Program for a term of 10121 through 93022 in the amount not to exceed $12,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item J.
I'd make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 Michigan Health Court Grant Program Contract with, contract in revised budget as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Recovery High School Grant Application as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Al?
Greg, did you want to do this one, too? I'd make the motion to adopt resolution 21-21, approving the annual county at-large drain assessments in the amount of $547,537.40.
Support.
Discussion.
Yes. I just want to give an adieu to our drain commissioner again. I think Bob Wiley's done a fantastic job. The drains are much, much better than they were prior to him being in office, which he took 12 years ago. Prior to that, we had a drain commissioner and nothing against him, but a lot of engineering work was done, and our drains were not clean. We had a lot of drains that had trees, 30, 40, 50 years old in them, and plugging our drains up. I think Bob Wiley has done an amazing job. You can testify to this, Jeff, is that prior to, the budget was roughly $100,000. Now it's $560,000, and he's doing a lot of work with the townships and working with them with the funds. And if they need to spread out the funds over numerous years, he's done that with them all, but he's doing a lot of work on their drains.
Yeah, definitely way more aggressive. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item M.
This time, I move to approve the 2022-2026 Capital Improvement Program as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item N.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the Air Industrial Park Non-A aviation vacant lot 63. Write the first offer and refusal to Innovative Machining Solutions LLC as presented.
Support.
Kathy, I'm going to stick you up there and embarrass you for a second.
That's right, last time.
Come on. So this is your last month?
Yes, it is.
Kathy will be retiring soon.
Yep.
Right?
I've been dealing with you the whole time that I've been on the board, and been a pleasure dealing with you. Been interesting when we got an opportunity to buy out Orzels, expand some of the services, those types of things. Really are leaving the airport in a better place than when you got it. Lot better. And I know you have a young lady here that's going to take the torch and run with it. Why don't you, I guess, get her up there and introduce her for a minute? This is our new airport director. I'm going to mess up your last name, so you have to say, this is Catherine Fiori. Fiori.
Catherine Fiori, okay.
So yes, we're leaving the airport in a very good place. And thank you for the board for everything that you've given us the whole time that we've been here, so it's actually worth it.
Okay.
Kathy DeCatherine.
Yeah.
Looking forward to working with everyone.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thanks for coming on board, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, you can sit back down. So I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item O.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the approval of the Air Industrial Park Non-A aviation vacant lot 64 agreement for purchase with Innovative Machine Solutions LLC in the amount of $20,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item P, the Brownfield Redevelopment Grant.
I would move for the approval of the Brownfield Redevelopment Grant application as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Item Q, contract approval for the Marine City Highway Corridor Study.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve contracting with Wade Trim to carry out the Marine City Highway Corridor Study for a term expiring 123122 and not to exceed amount of $144,635.
Support.
So as many of the commissioners are aware of, 26-mile road, which I don't think anybody's going to argue with you, it's arguably the next major growth hub that we have. There's a lot of, you know, unanswered questions as far as water, sewers, zoning, you know, so on and so forth. We put a committee together, Dave Struck, Dan Casey, Kurt Weston, the planner, oh, man, what's his name again?
Casson.
Casson, Steve Casson, yeah, five of them that are all have experience in this. They went out and had requests for proposals, and they felt that Wade Trim was, you know, a good candidate. Actually, even as part of this, we're looking at the King Road pieces. We had met actually with Candace Miller and McComb County folks over there to look if there's any potential tie-ins and conversations with a couple of municipalities. So it's going to be the proverbial no stone unturned to really get a good look at that area and capacity and all the other stuff. This thing's like anything, these things are going to take time. This is not going to happen overnight, but we have a big issues with no large tracts of land, as all the commissioners are aware of here. We are turning down lots of inquiries, 100, 200-acre lots. We have nowhere to park them. And what I mean by that, though, they have to be ready to go. Like that Magna Plant, for example, in St. Clair, it's 10 and 1/2 months from start to finish, 370,000 square foot staffed production. That's the kind of time turnarounds that you, that we are seeing in this, you know, the automotive world. That's the world that we live in, right? You know, and it just boom, 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 boom. So we got to be ready to go. So, for my stuff. Any other comments, questions? Dave, want to say anything?
Just, I know this is just the initial, but where's the money coming from?
These, this can be paid for from our American Rescue Plan Act funds because this qualifies under water and sewer infrastructure projects.
And we brought it up prior at the committee meeting, but I just wanted to clarify it again.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item, item R.
Mr. Chair, I guess before I read this, Matt Williams is in attendance, and if anybody has any questions about these, I'd move for the approval of the landfill materials supply request agreement with Ashfall Incorporated for a term of 12121 through 113022 in the amount not to exceed $306,300. S.A. Torrello for a term of 12121 through 113022 in the amount not to exceed $222,000. And JADC, DBA, Danny's Transport for a term of 12121 through 113022 in the amount not to exceed $348,890.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item S.
I'd move to approve the termination of the private hangar parcel T22 ground lease with Steve and Claire Backskin in as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item T.
This time, I move to approve the 2022 pension and retiree healthcare contribution rates as presented. Support.
Discussion.
Harry, you didn't see any, I mean, that's where we thought they would be?
Yes, actually, our actuarial valuation when we got our percentages were a little bit better than the estimates they had provided us the prior year, but these are, this will have us making our required contribution, and this is what's in the budget.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item U.
This time, I move to approve the American Rescue Plan Act funds as presented.
Support.
So commissioners, as we have all talked about, we all said we wanted to move forward of that. Each one of the commissioners is going to have $500,000 for their particular districts, contact your different municipalities. I know Dave had, I know Dave's and Dave's, and probably Duke and everything else, and, you know, find out what priority projects. Hopefully, there can be some additional matching funds that are, that are there. We received roughly $31 million. Carrie's got some needs, I know, at the county for, you know, a specific number. We're going to have substantial money left over, and I think it's part of the conversation we had with the whole 26-mile road thing. So we used to see the recent bills for infrastructure have been signed and those types of things, and I'm sure there's going to be some matching funds component to that. So we're going to, we're going to sit on a substantial, I think, amount of the money also to see if we can, you know, leverage it into some bigger stuff. Phil?
Got a couple of questions for Carrie. Could it be possible to get for the six townships in the half-city of Memphis, the census population? Because that's what I'd want to do. It's roughly $20 per person, and that way, we can have the exact amount for each municipality from wherever we get that from, whether it's the 2010 census or we have one more recent from SEMCO.
Yep, I can send you those updated figures. We have a spreadsheet that I believe I may have sent out earlier when the census figures came out. It does break it down by municipality.
Okay, and the process isn't completed yet, but how are those funds going to get to each municipality?
So when the board brings back the separate projects that they want to do for approval, we could write a check to those different municipalities.
This can be done before the end of the year?
It depends on when the projects are submitted and the timing of when they need the funds. We don't have to spend these until the end of 2024, so there isn't a hurry to meet any year-end deadline. It's better to vet the projects.
If you have specific projects that you know that are ready to go and you want to get going on it.
Six townships in my city half-city Memphis are going to give me a formal that they want to work on in 2021.
What we probably should do is commissioners actually get the projects to Carrie to make sure the eligibility requirements with some of these particular funds or different restrictions, things like that. So I guess if you have projects that you know of, maybe sit down, schedule. What we probably should do is do the Carrie and Gary, you know, and have some of the commissioners just pick a day where we come in and what we're looking at, you know, here's the different things, do they even, do they even, you know, can?
I'd like that, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, that would be like, because you don't want to go down the path and say, here's what, and by the way, we can't do that.
Can't do this.
So that would probably.
Did you see they have projects they want to have done by 2021? Yes, every one of them. In the next? I mean, I'm sorry, 2022. 2022.
A little off guard.
2022.
We're going to have to turn that around.
They'll have the paperwork, Timmy, but like the city of Memphis potentially is going to put a fence around the lagoon system for their water tower that's actually in St. Clair County. That's one of the projects. They're going to have culvert on Eglings Road in Riley Township. Wales Township is going to get it to me shortly. Columbus Township has given me specifics also, so I'll bring them.
Let's, we'll work on, we'll work on a meeting here, maybe right after Thanksgiving to just come in and sit down and, you know, here's what, here's what you're thinking.
Right, because the thought would be that the project needs to have been completed or bills for it, right? We're not just writing a check to say, well, we think we want to do this in the next couple of years, and here's your.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it should be more of a reimbursement. Is that, Dave, where you're going with it?
Well, the.
Ahead of time.
Majority in your township supervised, you know, the majority of the projects that are the money ones, you get the bid from the, or the quote from the road commission, Kurt Weston, and they'll come back, and then the township said, yep, we'll be doing this.
Right.
But the projects that Riley's presented, and they've already got the formal, have already got that quote done.
Right.
So they want to get the Eglings, Eglings Road culvert done. That's about a $300,000 project, and they'll use the funds, whatever they get, potentially on that project.
So we can use this for road projects?
Yes, and I'll interrupt. My son is the elected treasurer for Riley Township. He is very, very involved in this. He knows what our funds, and he's been working with Bill Dieter and other townships, and he's been working with the treasurer and the, at the county. And the reason, Clearwater Act, if you're having to do anything with the ditching, because it has to do with clear water within it, if it has to do with culverts and ditching, you can use it for that. He's also got a grant that he's going to be applying for in Riley, a $2 million potential grant to build a whole new township hall, which he'll have to give up 10% matching funds, but that's out of their money, it's not a disservice, but they'll be using it for that.
So how is it going to work? We'll submit to Gary what we would like to do in our communities?
I think sit down and explain to him much longer, because there's, you know.
And then is it going to come back and form the board?
Well, I think December, let me ask you this, so the final, the final thing's going to be in December, right? The ruling on this, the final.
Yes, the final rules are supposed to come out in December. They have said that if you spend any money that qualifies under the interim rule, then it is deemed qualified.
Okay.
So the final rule is not going to take something that was in the interim rule and make it not qualified. So it just may expand or give a little clarification, so if it is.
Carrie, how much money have you gotten of the 30 million?
We have gotten 50% of it, so about 15.5 million we received in May.
And when will the rest of it be sent? Have they said?
It should be sent in May of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Because I'd be more comfortable with, you know, bringing it to this board to commit to, you know, my communities, you will be getting this much, but then needing to see the project come to fruition before the check is cut.
I've made that very clear.
I like that idea, yeah.
That they have a very good understanding what the money's going to be.
One of the projects I've got going, I'm actually doing it with emergency management in hand, too, so they're actually going to be the lead on it with multiple of the communities trying to get a, by a multiple jurisdictional agreement with this sirens program to get some of our dead areas covered. And so it probably works better if it's through the county to start with, because there's multiple jurisdictions involved.
Yeah, and that's where we sit down and we talk through the different projects and the old saying, best way to skin the cat, figure out, you know, the best way to.
Talking with Dave, I've met with the CASCO board, and they very well may use the mic for that emergency siren.
Okay, very good. We had a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, item V.
Figure I get long ones when I can't see.
Where are your glasses? No, these are only for our.
I got to tip them off to read. Yeah.
Want me to read it?
Make a motion to do it, yeah. This one I can't get through.
It's his motion, but I'll read it. I move to approve the contract renewal with Toledo Elevator for the preventive maintenance and testing at administration, name library, Port Huron Courthouse, Health Department, and Intervention Center buildings for a term of 11/22 through 12/31/23 in the amount of $40,224.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item W.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Health Department Manning table change reclassifications to reclassify three adolescent social worker positions to adolescent mental health therapists as presented.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item X, the resolution for the 2022 budget adoption.
This time, I move to adopt Resolution 21-20, adopting the 2022 general fund budget.
Support.
So I would be remiss if I didn't say in 17 years on this board, we have increased our fund balance every year, even when times were bad. We always had to make the necessary cuts. Carrie, obviously, was our administrator, I mean, our accounting person prior to, you know, along with administrator. Obviously, now financially, you know, that's her background and stuff, so I say that because when, you know, a lot of municipalities, when they went through their bad times and stuff, they wouldn't make the necessary cuts. If you look at our pension and our healthcare, and I mean, we're in good shape, you know, with that, and we really, this, this budget just got us back to the revenue number when I first got on the board, 62 million. I think we're 64 right now on that budget, right? So, but literally, so from 2004 to get the revenues back to where we're at, it's been that long. And we've always been able to keep, keep the, keep the, keep the ship in pretty good shape and stuff, and so kudos to you guys for doing that.
If I could, I just want to give thanks to all the employees over that time, because there's a lot of sacrifices made by a lot of employees, because we cut the budget by 10 million, and it affects employees first, needed an awful lot. The raises were nil or very low, and the employees are the best asset that we have, so. I also make a funny, because I used to be the St. Clair County Township Supervisor Representative, and I came here and I just happened to be there at one of your budget hearings, and the sheriff was up there, and I always make this funny, because every year he'd give his undersheriff a raise, and you called it beggars' night, and then he'd get up there, and I was following the sheriff then, and he's up there saying he needed a raise, which has to be approved by this board, because now his undersheriff was making more than he was. That was just a funny, that was. They used to have beggars' night.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item Y.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 letter of agreement with Region 10 for RSAT Prevention Services for inmates as presented for a term of October 1st, 21 through September 30th, 22.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Z.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2021 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding CESF Program Grant Extension as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item AA.
I would move to approve fiscal year 21 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, the American Rescue Plan Act Agreement as presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item AB.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Renewal for a term of 10/1/22 through 10/12/31/22 in the amount of $851,502.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden is absent. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Item AC.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding CESF Grant Application as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Administrator's report.
So earlier this evening, you did approve a revised bond refunding resolution. The reason we were asking for those bonds to be designated as bank-qualified is it does achieve us some additional interest savings. So we will not get the final pricing until the first or second week in December. The reason the pricing is so far out is you're no longer allowed to do advance refundings before the bonds are callable, so those bonds are not callable until January, so the underwriter was not comfortable giving us pricing in November like we originally had hoped. But as part of that, Dean and I did participate in our bond rating call with Standard and Poor's, and they did reaffirm our bond rating of a double A with a stable financial outlook, which is good news. For this past several months, I have been working with the medical examiner's office and have met with various police chiefs regarding medical examiner operations and how we handle death investigations. Historically, law enforcement has performed death investigations for us, and we had numerous trained death investigators at the sheriff's office as well as some in municipalities. That model has been in place as long as I've been at the county. The police chiefs are starting to have some concerns about that model based on the amount of time it is taking them, along with they no longer have officers that are trained investigators. They've all been retiring, and they're, they don't have many new people coming up that are interested in learning to do this, because it is something that's traditionally outside regular police work. So I have been reviewing other county models, how they handle death investigations, and the way we are doing it is unusual. It is typically 100% handled by the medical examiner's office with forensic investigators. So I've been meeting with Dr. Spitz and received a proposal. Currently, law enforcement handles it for the 12 hours during the day, and the medical examiner handles it for the 12-hour evening shift, because it is a 24/7 operation. So I did receive a proposal for the medical examiner to take over those operations for the day shift as well. So I'm currently in the process of reviewing that proposal, looking at the amount of time law enforcement is spending during the day on the death investigations, and I will bring that analysis along with a recommendation back to you in December on how to move forward.
Will that include a time period that someone would have to respond to, you know, that someone from the ME's office would have to be on scene within their proposal, or is that something we can ask for?
Yes, that, that would be something that we could ask for, or that, so once they're on scene, law enforcement would no longer have to stay, and they would not have to wait for, let's say, the body removal company to come. The forensic investigators would handle all of, all of that investigation.
Because right now, it ties up an ambulance along with our law enforcement, because paramedics that pronounced have to stay.
Yes.
And then that shortens our rig, especially if you have two or three that call in, they tend to come in at similar times of the day, you know, morning when they're discovered, and that can put a real hit on our EMS side.
I was telling Carrie, my father, God rest his soul, but he passed of old age, 93, and so I found him, and then I had to call the police, the two guys, and they only have two people on in St. Clair, and they were there for, I bet you, three hours.
Oh, at least.
So here's, here's, you know, the two police officers that patrol the city, that they're just basically hanging out waiting, right? So if you can, you know, do things to help streamline that, I'm all about that.
What, are we happy with the services that he's been providing?
So I most, I had, did have a very long meeting with all of the police chiefs, and they did list a lot of their concerns, and their concerns did not revolve around the 12-hour evening shift, it was during the day shift in, in some of the response times, possibly to get somebody there for the removal or to, you know, for them to be able to potentially just release the body to a funeral home. So I, you know, I made sure all those concerns were addressed, and then just kind of looking forward to see if we continue with that model, what we would need to put in place to have law enforcement continue it, or if it's more cost-effective to allow Michigan forensics to take over the whole operation, which would be more typical than from what counties do. I have not come across, I've come across one county where all of their detectives are trained medical investigators, but that is very unusual.
Potentially, then, if I'm looking at it correctly, they're going to have to hire one person to cover those 12 hours.
Well, they would need more than one person to cover 12 hours, because it's seven days a week.
All right, then, in addition to that, just railroad story, because with on-call, we have conductors, switchmen, whatever reason, engineers, if they didn't make their shift, there's people that are on-call, they have to show up for work. Would we be able to use our current trained people that would be paid overtime to cover those if necessary?
No, Michigan forensics would be required to cover those daytime hours with their staff, so if the person that was scheduled for that day is unavailable to work, they would be responsible for finding the replacement, because those are not county employees. Unfortunately, we have another retirement coming up this year. Our Buildings and Grounds Director is leaving at the end of this year. That position is currently posted, so we are hoping to. Yeah.
Really?
To conduct interviews and, and get someone in place, so we don't have too long of a gap with that vacancy.
Is that right?
Yeah.
It is, yes. Yep, he's retiring.
Graduated high school, again, I should be retiring.
Got 20 more years to him.
Our four union contracts that are up for negotiations, we have tentative agreements for three of them that we hope will be coming to you next month, and the fourth is still being worked on. And last, earlier this week, myself, Jenny, and Commissioner Baldwin met with the Friends of the St. Clair River to get an update on the gypsy moth program and where they were at with their Phase 1 proposal. They have been going through, doing the field work, the egg mass surveys. They do still have work to do, but they have been working with county GIS to map those and look at the hotspots. Next month, we will be coming, or they have a proposal for the Phase 2 of the program, which would include areas that would potentially be eligible for treatment and how the board would like to go forward with those. So we have asked them to come in and give a brief presentation at your December meeting just to give an update as to where that's at.
I was on that two-hour phone call, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, you were quiet.
More information on gypsy moths. Care to regurgitate it?
They, they did, they did bring in a live.
I tell you, super thorough, though, they're on top of it. We obviously got hit with this gypsy moth thing last year, never knew what a gypsy moth